Good evening. We are going to call the May 1st, 2013 meeting of the Amory City Council to order. Fran, do you want to do the roll call?
Certainly. Myers?
Yes.
Iksen?
Here.
Kershak?
Here.
Strobusch?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And then Blair.
And Rogers is excused. I want to ask Darryl Christensen to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Darryl.
You're welcome.
In your packets, you should have the minutes of the meeting from April 3rd, and I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any corrections or additions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They have been accepted. You also have in your packet the minutes of our special organizational meeting that was held on April 17th, so I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes as well. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I have a correction.
Correction, okay.
In the liaison to the Apple River Protection District, my name should be there instead of Kay's.
Okay.
It's right on the list.
Yeah, it's right on the list. We corrected that, okay. We'll change the minutes to reflect that correction. Any other corrections? Any other committees you want to serve on date?
Is it corrected? What about Iowa City?
No, on the list.
No, it's...
Not on the minutes.
On the minutes, not on the finalized list it was corrected.
And I think it's right on the website.
But the minutes are incorrect.
I didn't read the list. I didn't have time.
Move to accept the corrected list.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. Upcoming events, we have Milt Johnson from Centennial Hall here.
Yes.
Would you like to come up? That way, everybody can see you. And then you can also get the microphone, and that way they can hear you on the TV as well.
I'm First Vice President of the Senior Center at Centennial Hall, and I'm a little hoarse. My brother gave me one of his colds, and I find it difficult, or you probably can't even understand me sometimes. But the Senior Center is putting on the Studebakeers at the cricket on May 18th from 6:00 to 9:00. And they'll be playing the '50s music. Everybody will like that, I'm sure. And the admission is only $5, and there's plenty of great food. I'm a...I think about food all the time. And you can dress in the '50s type of clothes, and they'll have a drawing after for some fabulous prizes. And there's also a silent auction there. The items on the silent auction are on display at the Senior Center right now, and they will be taken out to the crickets on the May 18th. That just about blows it. It's $5, very reasonable, and you'll have a great time.
And it's on May 18th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m.?
From 6:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Okay, all right, Milt, thank you very much.
Have the time of your life.
All right. Thank you very much.
You do best. Bye.
And our county supervisor, Warren Nelson, has asked for a couple of minutes.
I'm making one of my infrequent appearances because the last meeting we had yesterday had some issues that people in Amory might want to hear about. Beginning with the gun issue, ordinance to repeal the resolution prohibiting possession of handguns in the government building failed by a 12 to 11 vote, so it was very close. But as of now, people won't be carrying guns legally, anyway, in the board meetings, which might not be a bad idea since we all are about 80 and have...our eyesight's not that good. I can just imagine bullets flying. So anyway, that was the highlight, and we had a lot of people speaking. The public did take it seriously, and so the public comments did occupy some time. The other issue that discussed, a land donation from Janet Algren, 180 acres adjacent to D.D. Kennedy Park, and it took $4,000. It will take $4,000 off the tax room, which is, you know, a pretty small amount, while increasing the quality of life, I think, and maybe potentially generating tourism and things of this sort. But it wasn't clear passage. It's a long debate on this subject, and we did decide to take the land 15 to 8. So the rate people, it felt like it wasn't worth taking the land, and it's a beautiful piece of property. So anyway, it passed. The other thing I wanted to mention, we had an interesting survey that was set up on the 23rd, their committee as a whole. They rigged up electronically, thank God, I wasn't one designing this. We all got a little clicker, an electric clicker, with numbers 1 through 5, and there were 42 different items connected with county government that we voted on. And it was, as I say, 1 through 5. 1, very, very important, 5, not important. And so it gives people an idea of what the county board thinks are important and what they think is not important. Law enforcement was at the top of the list, the various categories. Highway, which you would think might be higher, was just sort of in the middle. The bottom portion is not what should surprise too many people. The second lowest is tourism, the information center. Why, I don't know, because it does potentially generate sales tax revenue for Polk County, but at any rate, it was bottom, next to bottom. Above it, barely above it, Golden Age Manor. So of the 42 items, number 42 was West Central Regional Planning, which is a consortium of the seven counties surrounding us. That received the lowest. Then came Public Health was fourth, from the bottom. And I think what we're going to see, the budget of 2014, is probably a departure from our home nursing program, which I hate to see happen, but that seems to be the direction the board's going. I'm happy to be talking to everyone now because it gives everyone an opportunity to talk to the board and talk to the county, and maybe your influence could change things a little bit. But those are the things that appear to be at greatest risk. And other things, recycling is almost on the bottom also. And so, I don't know, it's fairly complicated. I'm just giving you the priority score ranking, but they have a lot of other aspects. But anyway, it's kind of an interesting thing to look at, and it gives everyone a feeling for what the county board regards as very important and what they regard as virtually unimportant. And some things are kind of...I'm taking a lot of time, but some things are kind of funny. We spent 45 minutes debating whether we want to pay a lady whose chickens were killed by a neighbor dog $74, and that was rejected. And it's a $60 million budget, and we spent a whole lot of time on $74 items, $100 items, things of this sort. So it's something that the constituency of the various board members should be discussing. The last thing, and I will get out of your hair, is that the Erie Women's Club should be applauded there, pushing the recycling program. They've sent letters to all of the board members. They're looking for a couple of extra garbage bins because evidently they fill up too fast, and then people throw them in the trash on the ground.
And this weekend, it was like that. There were bags piled up next to the dumpsters.
Well, they're $5,000 at pop, I guess. Pulling that out of the county budget is going to be like pulling keys, I think, but maybe once again, if people make an issue. And it has resonated with the board members. They received letters, and I had two or three of them come to me and say that it was worthwhile. Proposal, and maybe another aspect would be to try to increase the pickup cycles or something. Maybe we could...I'm not sure how often they pick up now, but maybe we could cut that in half. But there's some options on the table, and I think the Women's Club represents an example of what can be done if people make their wishes known. Anyway, thank you very much for...
Warren, I have a question for you regarding the prioritization by the county board. Is that information, public information, I mean, if somebody wanted to go and get a copy of it or go online and access it?
I'm not sure if it's online, but I would have...I would think it would be available. If you have a machine here, you could make copies of this. One thing that was interesting that I didn't mention, they took a survey of county employees. 149 responded. 70% felt like they would not be safer having guns allowed in buildings versus 30% that felt like they would be safer. So, you know, it's a pretty overwhelming amount of the people that participated. But then some of the people said, well, it might have been all women, it might have been all men, or young people, or old people. And there are a lot of things that could affect the numbers, but raw data, 70 to 30.
Do you know, I think it's valuable to know what the county supervisors think are priorities, but have they ever done a survey to find out what the citizens of the county think are important?
Or whether the citizens of the county think the county board is important.
God, you're absolutely...
Well, I know where Mike's coming, but we've...the city of Amory's done lots of surveys in the last few years, surveying anywhere from, you know, simple things of the citizens, input for parks and rec. And then I think a couple of years ago, we did a budget survey when there was quite a few cuts that were coming down to hit everybody locally from Madison, and to kind of get a priority, see what the public thinks. And we've done most of those, we're on the web. And I know the county's got a website, and they have a pretty good person that takes care of all the technology stuff at the county.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think people would participate in it. I mean, we've had some pretty good turnout and good results from some of our surveys.
Well, this one wasn't very sophisticated. It was...I happened to be on the property committee that discussed this, and the thought was that we should try to get a feeling for the public, for the employees. But if you wanted to really make a good survey, you would break it down, sex and age and things like that, I suppose. But it did give some ideas, anyway.
How long was your survey? You said it was 100 and something?
149. We have 450...
You couldn't do it that long for the public. I mean, yeah, it's too long, but something simpler might...
It would be interesting if you looked at trying to get input from county citizens as to, of those 48 items that the board of supervisors prioritize, how it would compare to what the people that they represent...
Yeah, I'm not sure how to best do that.
Website. Darson just explained it. We do it all the time.
Yeah. There's a lot of web-based survey tools that are very easy to tabulate.
I'll certainly suggest it because...
And most of our...
The problem is, though, you know, this thing was supposed to reflect our constituency.
It doesn't. It reflects the supervisors. That's all it reflects.
In a lot of cases. Certain people have vendettas against certain projects.
I guess I would request that you make those copies available, at least to the council and maybe anybody else that's interested, if the free press is interested in it, because I think that that gives you a real sense of where...
Bones can go make copies of that if you don't mind sharing that.
...what the county board is, you know, about, and it's important for voters to know.
Is there a...
Bones will take care of it. I have one more suggestion for you, Warren. You talk about wasting 45 minutes of valuable time discussing $75 payments. And do like we do, put dollar limits on things and decide it in committees. That's...you're wasting...you waste time when you...we don't discuss things like that.
This was decided in committee to give the lady $74. The board rejected the committee and decided not to give them $74. Well, our budget now is $74 to the good.
Somehow, it'd be a lot better.
Well, the month before, we had a $100 issue. They wanted a National Spay Day to spay cats, and they wanted a $100 contribution from the county to do this. It was rejected after about an hour discussion. And the bottom line was that they think that, in my opinion, spaying one cat would save $100. I don't know how many letters they have in here, but that was rejected. So we saved $174. But we have to dig into the meat of things, and where the money is, highways, public protection, things that, just like you guys, have certain areas that spend more money than...but we don't miss with that.
I have another question.
Oh, God.
That'll teach you.
Do you know what the process will be to...is that dependent on the election? Because we're reducing the size of the county board from...
It'll be 3 to 15.
15. So what's the timeline and the process for that to happen, do you know?
What do you mean? The election is next April, so then...
So all 20, all?
Yeah, all of them.
And has the rezoning been done?
No. That's...I could talk about that committee, too. The rezoning will be out to the townships in four weeks. The book is 196 pages or something like that. And it's pretty impressive. They've been working on it for four years, and the gal that's...Tim, the guy that's doing it, did a really good job on it, so...
Well, thank you very much for sharing this information with us.
Sure, and if he makes...
He went to go get copies.
Yeah, he went to get a copy, yeah.
If you guys want...
He'll make enough.
Okay, we're still on their upcoming events. Andrea, do you have something? Andrea Grasser?
I got fluffed to Warren's fact, that's for sure. On a lighter note.
Yeah, good to see you, Andrea.
I'm actually here on behalf of our Cops and Kids Committee at the Amory Police Department to talk about movies and golf scrambles, so...
Hold on a second. Warren, Warren. We can hear you. Sorry.
The first one, although it happens to be snowing outside today, next Friday, May 10th, we are going to do a movie on the Amory High School baseball field. We're doing this in combination with the Amory High School baseball team as a fundraiser for them. Baseball team is taking on the Somerset Spartans at 5:00, and they're going to do a tailgate party, and I've been working with Mark Lumen, and we're looking at some wiffle ball and maybe some radar to do some, seeing how fast you can throw and stuff in between. And then we'll do at dusk, which I believe is shortly after 8:00 that night, we are going to show The Sandlot, which is a fabulous old baseball movie. Fantastic range of people, from families with younger kids to middle school. And actually, it was the high school baseball team that picked that movie out. So we expect to have a great night and warm weather for that, just in case. We do have the high school gymnasium online, just in case. But to follow that up, that's kind of our kickoff. We've had a great turnout when we've done them at the school in the past, both on the football field, whether it be with the student council or the band. And we did do one last spring on the baseball field, and the fire department will be there to provide us some lights at the end of the night so we can take down the equipment, hoping not to have the sprinklers turn on this year like they did last year. We're learning. Every year, we're learning. I know how to turn them off now. But our Cops and Kids summer movies are also scheduled now, the first one being Friday, June 14th. We will be showing Rise of the Guardians, which is an animated feature. I guess it has to do with like the Tooth Fairy and the Easter Bunny taking on the bad guy to save the world. Very good movie. Wednesday, July 3rd, we're doing our first ever community choice, and I need to have the community go on to the Amory website, go to the Amory Police Department tab, and up on the right-hand side of that Amory Police Department, you will see the link to vote on the movie we show that night. We're looking at classics. Our options were Footloose, Princess Bride, Grease, and E.T. And we don't have a lot of votes in yet, so we'd like a little more of the community to have some input on that movie. And then we'll show that one July 3rd. Wednesday is kind of a weird night, but everybody should be off on the 4th and enjoy the fireworks, and we thought that would be fun. We had a great turnout when we did one that weekend a couple of years ago. And the final one, at least for our summer series, is on Friday, August 9th. We are tentatively going to show The Great and Powerful Oz. We expect that to be released. That just went out of theaters. Everybody that we've talked to said that's a fantastic movie. So that's what is on the slate for our summer movies. Which brings me to our Cops and Kids Golf Scramble. I have to thank the Lions Club for working with us this spring with the weather again. They added so many days to the school year. It was actually going to be...their kids are going to be in school the day of the tournament, and we rely on a lot of the people from up at the school to volunteer that day for our tournament as well as golfing it. So the date for the Cops and Kids Golf Scramble is Tuesday, June 18th. The letters will go out here in the next week, and that is where we raise the money to keep the movie equipment up and going, to pay the licensing, along with the Amory Community Club for those movies, the bike rodeo scholarships that will go out to a senior. We have pledged some money to one of the mental health task force things that is going on in Polk County now among some of our projects, as well as the...some of our equipment needs at the police department. One of the speed boards was money from Cops and Kids helped to pay for that. So that's our fundraiser is the golf scramble, and that's where we raise the money to do all of those things. With the movies, we're finally figuring it all out. All of them are scheduled on Fridays now. We will automatically have the rain date be on Saturday so that we can be outside. And then our Plan C is to go back to the ice arena, which worked out really well for us, and I'm on the board now, so I don't even need to get their permission. We're starting to figure it out and looking forward to it, but really want to invite everybody to come next Friday night. We're going to have good weather, I'm sure of it, and support the baseball team and get a crowd in that stands, and let's welcome spring in this community with a baseball game and a movie, so that's what I have.
Thank you, Andrea. Any questions?
Andrea, it is voted. It's voted. So you don't have to take each...
Is there anyone else here to promote any upcoming events?
My name is Mary McCula, and I am the program coordinator for Day Friends. I left information at the tables, and I also left some information in the back. I know we came and spoke to you guys when we first opened, so it's been a little over a year, and I just want to let you guys know that we have helped out 17 families in the community so far, and we hope to remain a viable part of Polk County, being the only Day Respite Program for anyone suffering from memory loss or any similar issues with that. And we did receive a grant from Polk County APS to put together a DVD to market our program because they feel so strongly about it. So I have the shortened version with me tonight that I would like to share with everyone, and then I'll just answer any questions after, if that's okay.
Okay.
I might be able to see if I can put the lights on.
Yeah, we'll turn the light on.
Did I just lose it?
I don't know. We don't do it.
Larry, you may all two get that?
There we go.
We'll turn it so that you can see it. They may have to sit out in the audience, so.
Can we get it close enough so that we can hear the sound?
Yeah, we haven't turned it on yet. All right. Push play. Ooh. Is that loud enough?
Just thinking of the mic.
Play button is the smallest button.
I think it worked. There we go. Day Friends is a day program that's open Monday through Friday. It is a nonprofit organization that will supply care for people suffering from any kind of memory loss, including Alzheimer's, dementia, traumatic brain injury, and also people with similar needs. Our facility here at Day Friends is state certified. We do have to go through inspections with the state, and before we opened, we had to pass quite an intense survey of someone coming out and checking out all of our accreditations in our area, our environment, our programming. Everything is monitored by the state, our activities. They make sure that we are providing the care that is needed. We do not have a list of activities that are set for each day. We vary our day according to the participants that are here, and the way that they're feeling, and the way that they feel about being here. Some participants come here to socialize, and they're well aware of that. Other participants come feeling like they're a volunteer. Some participants come thinking they're going to school or going to work, so we accommodate whatever need they have. We may have a participant that thinks that they are on vacation away from their farm. So we just go with the conversation and help adjust their day to wherever they are. And it's important to remember that the participants in our program were people that were very active in the community. They worked every day, or they were a housewife, and they took care of the kids and the house. And now, all of a sudden, they're dealing with this disease, and they're... they're dealing with this disease and they're feeling isolated and they're feeling more alone and they feel as if they can't help. And we keep them very busy and make them feel like they're busy and active in the community again, between our outings and the different things that we do inside our program. Our participants in our program not only come here for the activity, but they also come for the family environment. We try to set up our program area and our activities to look very much like a home environment and to feel like a family. They are treated like as if they are a family member, treated like they're a mother or a father or a brother, depending upon the age or what age they believe they're at, at the time. We always start the day with breakfast. And those that like coffee get to start their day with their coffee. We usually have some kind of a socialization time during breakfast, some kind of a reminiscing time. And then after breakfast, some of them choose to help out with the household chores and the dishes and so forth. And that really helps them feel like they're in a home atmosphere when they're helping with those items. And then we start the day with activities. We vary our activities from things that are more social to activities that will stimulate brain activity, to other activities that stimulate physical activity, some different exercise and stretching or activities that they're doing something physically with their body but don't even realize it. So, we do quite a varied amount of activities. And then, of course, we supply a snack if they're hungry and we supply lunch. And then in the afternoon, some of them do choose to have a little rest time, which is great. They need to have that also as part of their day. And then we do many more activities until the end of the day, again, rotating our activities to stimulate brain and body and get them socializing and feeling like they are a part of the community again. Well, the caregiver can actually have a short amount of real life back again. Of course, any day that you spend with your loved one is real life. But when you're starting to care for someone with Alzheimer's, it is so important to take some time out for yourself and, you know, have a glimpse back into your real life. Go out to coffee with a friend, get your errands run without having to worry about having them with you, make doctor's appointments, anything that would make your life a little simpler. I feel it's very important for caregivers to take advantage of a day program like ours because it's important for them to remember that because they're reaching out for help that they're not a failure. Everybody needs help when it comes to this disease. It's a very trying and long disease. And actually, it's the best thing that they could do for their loved one is to bring them to a program like this. Because their loved one is going to find success and they're going to realize after they get some respite how important it really is. So, it's a win-win for both people, your loved one and yourself. You both will benefit. And many families have seen really great results in just a few days of someone being here. Some memory comes back. They remember being here. They remember the people that are here. They remember some of the fun activities. They're laughing and smiling more and being more like their old selves. So, that is our shorter version. We have a longer version on YouTube. If anyone in the community is interested in seeing that, you just have to go to YouTube and in the search box, put Day Friends Adult Day Care. And I have a 14-minute video that goes into a more in-depth description of our program and lots of family testimonies in the video too about how the program has helped the families. So, does anyone have any questions about our program that I can answer?
Mary, maybe you can give your contact phone number again for viewers?
Sure. Our phone number is 715-485-8762. And you can also find our Day Friends page on Facebook, if anybody's a Facebook person. And also, we have a website at endeavorsadc.org. So, please look us up and check us out.
Thank you very much, Mary. Appreciate it. Anyone else with any upcoming events? I have a list of things that I somehow know are happening. I must have it in my calendar or something. This coming Saturday, May 11th, St. Joseph's Catholic Church is having their annual rummage sale. Don't forget that Sunday, May 12th, is Mother's Day. And then Memorial Day on the 27th. Also, we have the Stour Seven Lakes Triathlon is scheduled for Saturday, June 8th. And then the community club's first music on the river at Michael Park is scheduled for Saturday, June 15th. Anyone else? Okay. We will move on to officers' report. James Nayland from the library.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm pleased to go first tonight. I don't really get to do that. Just a few things coming up at the library in the next month. This Monday, May 6th, we'll have our next class on eBooks, how to get them on your device, what they are, different types of devices. We'll talk about those. We're also continuing our drop-in help sessions on eBooks and tablets. That's every Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00. Just bring your device in. If it has a USB cable with it, that's pretty helpful for me to have, if it's an older type tablet like a Kindle or a Nook or something. And bring your questions. The Friends of the Library will be having their next book sale this Saturday, which is May 4th from 9:00 to 1:00. And lastly, we have Storytime every Wednesday at 10:30. But the children's librarian wanted me to emphasize that on May 29th, kids who are planning to attend that Storytime should come in a superhero costume. And they'll be wearing their costume and doing some sort of superhero craft, so. And adults, I imagine, could wear theirs too if they wanted to. That's all I have.
Any questions for James?
Thank you. Thanks.
Tom Marson, police chief. That's why you're next.
All right. Good evening. Beautiful weather out here. A few things tonight. Andrea had mentioned about bicycle rodeo. We're going to be doing our bicycle rodeo, May 30th, at the Amory Intermediate School. There'll be some flyers coming out there. There's three different sessions. I believe it's 3:30, 4:15, and 5:00 p.m. There'll be information, like I said, going out to the schools. We'll drop some stuff off at the library as well. Started charging up the batteries today for our mobile speedboard there, so we'll be getting that out in the near future there to utilize that. Our department is going to participate as an unfunded member in the Click It or Ticket campaign this year, which starts May 20th and goes through June 2nd. So, we'll be out that. It's time to start thinking about junk vehicles and debris that may have accumulated over the winter and all that kind of good stuff there. Certainly, we'll be out in the near future taking a look at those and encouraging people to take the proper course for that. I'm sure Bones will be talking about the day at the dump as well there. Last thing, at times, we get calls about illegally, or what is perceived to be illegally parked vehicles in handicapped areas there. Just a reminder that if you have the card, it needs to be hung up on the mirror there and not laying in different spots there. We come across those at times. In fact, today I come across one that looked like it was illegally parked and was actually up on the visor, covered up and a little bit there. So, just a reminder that those are out there for people that need them and we certainly want you to adhere to the rules there. And that's all I've got. Any questions at all?
Questions for Tom? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Fire chief, Darryl Christensen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the community. Media and the council members have presented the April 2013 Fire Rescue Incident Report. April was, once again, another busy month. We had a total of 29 calls, nine of those being fire and 20 being medical. And again, they're spread out throughout the different jurisdictions that we protect. Just want to make a note, we're 120 days into the year. And as of this afternoon, we are at 150 calls for the year. So, it looks like it's going to be a busy season unless, of course, with the weather we're having, we may skip draft fire season. Amory Fire Department or myself participated in a fundraiser last month in April. Salvation Army sponsored a empty bowls fundraiser at the high school. Our class made a bunch of pottery bowls and they sold those in the different churches and other organizations. Had different types of soups that you could purchase. Chief Marson and I were asked to be part of the silent auction where they could bid on each of us. And the winning child would be picked up by the fire chief and the police chief and taken out for lunch. Once again, Police Chief Marson was a no-show. So, yes, he sent an officer to stand in for him and they assumed he was there as another auction item. So, there was two police officers that were up for bid and then the fire chief. I'm not going to say how much the two officers made in their silent auction, but I raised $100 for the Salvation Army. And I think the two police officers and the two other principals that were up for election didn't make $100 combined. So, Tom, maybe for the actual superhero day, I think we've got a turnout set that you can wear instead of a police uniform.
Such you guys are already wearing superheroes.
And if Tom would have scored higher on a civil service test, he could have been there. Progress on the new fire truck. I was in Osceola today. They had a few finalized questions. It's coming along rapidly. The builder informed me that there is an emergency services conference on May 31st in Brule. And our truck will be done and will be on display up there as a demo model on May 31st. So, I sent Darcy some pictures today of what I was able to get pictures of.
And they're at the end of your council packet, the photos that were sent to me.
The pictures of the pump panel and the seat and then the actual fire truck itself are not our truck. It's not that far along yet, but that is a truck that they're building right now that is similar to what ours is going to be. So, for the June council meeting, we will have the truck here on display. And maybe Larry can take the camera outside and take a picture of it. And if any of the council members are interested, they said by next week, you'll see great progress on it. So, if anybody's interested, let me know and we can arrange a little field trip and we can go over there and take a look at it. On Friday, April 26th, the Amory Fire Department was presented with the 2012 Amory Community Club Municipal Employee of the Year Award. On behalf of the Fire Department, I want to thank the community for selecting the Fire Department. It's truly an honor to receive this award. It shows that the hard work and dedication of the members of the department don't go unnoticed throughout the year. So, again, thank you for that. It's been my honor to serve as the fire chief, but it's the members of the department that make Amory Fire the great department that it is. Along with that, the other important component to that is the spouses and significant others, the firefighters, without their understanding and support of what we do as volunteers, the efforts that we put in and the time away from home and events that takes a special person to marry a firefighter, especially a volunteer firefighter, where you don't have select or direct hours. 2:00 in the morning, Monday morning, we're out for, you know, five hours fighting multiple house fires or trailer house fires. Not something that's planned. So, along that line, I'd like to personally thank and recognize all the members of the department that helped us to receive that award. My wife Cheryl, Assistant Chief Chuck Fron and Tammy, Assistant Chief Mike Odison and Christie, Safety Officer Steve Waterman, Captain Eric Kelly and Jen, firefighters Chris Franzen and Michelle, Sherry Martin, Erica Fron, J.T. Smith, Jacob Markhausen and Amy, Craig Lisney, Mark Omen and Meredith, Captain Mitchell Lee and Ashley, Captain Darren VanBarkham and Laura, firefighters Dave Wellyou and Michelle, Kevin O'Brien and Colleen, Mark Bobelson and Brenda, Bill Veerkant and Melissa, Chris Anderson, Bamer Martin and Becky, Captain Ed White and Ann, Dave Lundgren and Dawn, Dennis Lumen and Nancy, Travis Mork and Lauren, Joy Jackson and Russ, Gary Anderson and Terry, Rick VanBarkham and Bonnie, Howie Montief and Kelsey, Tom Dusick, Captain Dale Kahler and Kate, Nathan Bells and Jessica, Mike Ingham and Kelly, Tyler Bauermeister and Kelly, Mark Johnson and Marcia, Ashley Allen and Doug, Lee Jones and Sid, and Trent Christensen and Marissa. We've also got a group we've talked about several times, our explorers. They do a lot of work for the Fire Department. Some of them are up at 2:00 in the morning even though they shouldn't have been. They should have been sleeping, getting ready for school. But Spencer Awoud is Explorer Captain, Devin White is our Explorer Lieutenant. The other explorers, Lane Christensen, Carl Omen, Tyree Davis, Joe O'Brien, and Kelsey Betrue. So, thank you to each one of them and their spouses and significant others for everything they do for the Fire Department and the community throughout the year.
And congratulations to you and the department on receiving the award. That was a great honor.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Any questions for Darryl? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bones?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The guys have been out trying to keep up on the patching this year. I've gotten several phone calls and a lot of requests on places to pave. So, I don't know how far the street budget will go this year, but we'll try to stretch it as far as we can. Got a lot of requests for Baker Avenue. As you know, that's in pretty rough shape. Also, the guys have been putting the docks in and getting ready for... I don't know. We better think about plowing snow again. Do want to wish you a happy May Day on that note. Also, the meter project has been in full progress for about three weeks now. We're about three-quarters done with the residential section of it. Been getting a real good turnout from the public, not too many complaints. There's always some things that go wrong, but for the most part, it's been running pretty smooth. This Saturday, the 4th, the dump officially opens for the summer. First and third weekend every month, dump will be open for leaves brush. As they said, June 15th is going to be dump days this year. So, start collecting all your stuff and getting it all ready. Leaf pickup also is next week, the 6th to the 10th. And the fire chief told, reminded everybody to come and see Marson in his Speedo and tights on... On Superhero Day, May 29th. He'll be at the library. I don't know if that's a fundraiser or not. And that's about all I have tonight.
Bones, can you tell me what was, what the work was being done at?
There's been a couple of those. That was a collapsed sewer in the parsonage. The reason that one got noticed by so many people was right in the middle of town. We had to go a little farther across the center lane, so there was some mass confusion, let's call it, with trying to get traffic directed around there. Last time, it was the house right next door. We didn't have as much problem. We didn't need to go clear across, which I don't understand. I don't remember exactly what happened there. It's been a couple of years ago. But we were able to keep two lanes open. This time, we were down to one lane, so we had to divert traffic around. And I do apologize to everybody for the inconvenience. That was a private job, but we assisted them with the traffic control and the state permit and everything that was involved there. There's been a couple other ones in town, but they went unnoticed. So, yeah, that's... So, yeah, that's what that was.
Any questions for Bones?
Thank you.
Thank you. Darcy.
Well, I wanted to also congratulate the Fire Department for receiving the Employee of the Year Award from the Community Club and Dave Myers, Councilman Dave Myers, received an award at that event as well for the Mayor's Award, so I want to congratulate him as well. That was an exciting night and a good event. Wanted to mention a few things. Bones talked about meters and visiting with Linda Coon, who does all our utility billing for the city. She took kind of a count of how many we've replaced and so far, we're at 725 meters have been upgraded to radio reads so far. So, they've really been moving along and at much faster pace than I would have ever anticipated, that's why it's pretty good.
And what, again, is the total that we need to replace?
1,200.
1,200, yep. So, a little more than half done.
Yep. And then I wanted to mention the newsletter that came in your utility bill and there are also copies available at the front of City Hall, they are also available down to the library and then to Police Department, and so check that out, there's a lot of valuable information about things upcoming, some of the things that the mayor has mentioned. I'm going to highlight a couple of things in there that are important to people. We've had a lot of people come in about burn permits and we have been telling them that we're kind of watching the DNRs, they have, on their website, they have the DNR post with the fire dangers, and so we usually wait till 11:00 to see what, if they're allowing burning. Part of the week and part of the weekend, there was kind of a burning ban temporarily. So, if you are in need of a burn permit, you might want to call first to see if we've checked that site to make sure that you are able to get a burn permit. And right now, we're only doing them for one day. You can go online and acquire a permit and the Fire Chief will respond to you and let you know that you've gotten one. If you go online and there's the Amory logo, it says Discover Amory, if you click on that, it'll take you to the, what we call the CRM, the Citizen Management, Citizen Response Management System, and you go in there under Fire Chief and you click on that and you can apply for a building, a burn permit, not a building permit, a burn permit from the Fire Chief on the weekends or after hours. We will also put a direct link on the Fire Department's website so you can easily access that, people have asked about that. We're going to talk about this a little bit later, but the goose, the goose egg oiling, the city got a permit to do that, and so what we're going to be asking for is volunteers. Now, we don't have a training sessions date set, the weather outside kind of screws up the ability to go out and do the activity, but we will be looking and asking for volunteers. You can simply send an email or call City Hall and let the staff here at City Hall know that you're interested and we'll put your, get your name and number and put you on a list. And if you have email, we can also send you an email out letting you know when that meeting's going to be available. We're trying to get the person from Wildlife Services to come here and do kind of an introduction and training on what to do to oil the eggs, and we want to get going on that soon as the geese have begun to do their spring nesting, so we want to get that started soon. And also, we need help from the public, and I think Dave will say this again later during his committee report, we need help to find the nests. And so if you live on one of the three lakes in town, if you live on the Apple River and you know of a nest that is nearby your residence or by your property and you, and it's a regular nesting spot for geese, can you please let us know about that too? Because we need help trying to identify locations in Amory where nests are being built by the geese, so that'll help us in the egg oiling process. And so if you can do that, you just simply call, give us kind of a general area, that'll help narrow it down for us and for volunteers. We need quite a few volunteers, so if you're interested, please contact City Hall. Also wanted to talk about the beach party. If you look outside, it doesn't seem like beach party weather, but that is June 13th and hopefully the weather will improve so that activity will, if it looks like that the weather is not going to be cooperative, we will come up with a alternate date for that event. This is the second year we've done that. We'd rather have the weather be nice instead of bonfire and hot chocolate. You know, we want people to actually go out into the water and enjoy Amory's lakes.
Will the ice be out by June?
The ice is gone on South Twin, but you might want a wet suit to do that. Some other things that are of importance, I wanted to mention the garage sales. We've actually had two garage sale permits, two or three, a couple of them were inside for churches, but I want to go over that real quick and that is in the newsletter, so you can look at that. You're allowed to have, there's a cost of $5 for a garage sale permit, you're allowed two, and if you want a third one, which last year, we modified our ordinance for garage sales to allow a resident to have a third permit, but that third permit will cost $15. So if you want to have a third garage sale this summer, you need to pay an extra fee to do that. There's also details on cleanup that is coming up the same week as the beach party. All the details are in there and the fees for some items, and that is only for city residents. So if you are a city resident and you have items that you need to get rid of and maybe items that may cause Tom to come and visit you and maybe send you a letter, it'd be to your benefit to maybe take those items out to dump day. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Darcy? Bones, one thing on the meters, I just want to let you know that I did have several people stop me in the grocery store just saying what a great job the people installing the meters were, had done, that they were very quick and efficient and they're very appreciative of it, so.
I would add that also, that I take care of the house across the street while my neighbor is in Arizona and my own house, and so I made appointments for us. A young man showed up, was in there for less than 15 minutes, we went across the street, and he can install that one in 15 minutes and everything was done extremely well, very efficient.
Can I mention something on that? There was one, a couple of concerns by some residents about the, being a radio frequency and it's not, it's not exactly like Wi-Fi, it's a licensed frequency that only works with the handheld device once we get it and that's on order. It only works with that, so it's very similar to what the power company and what the gas company use to read meters. And so there's no, there shouldn't be a fear of interfering with your computer or any other device in your home. It's a pretty common technology for utilities to incorporate into their systems for reading. So, if you have, if you had that concern, it, please, it's not something that is going to interfere with anything or harm you as a homeowner.
Thanks, Darcy. Okay, moving on to committee reports, we are going to start with Public Works.
Public Works met yesterday morning at 9:00 AM and we had two things on the agenda and Bones talked about the first one, so I won't repeat what he said about the radio read project. We spent a lot of time talking about a walkability study, which came out of the public hearing that we had last January about sidewalks on Hillcrest and sidewalks led to lots of other discussion. So it boils down to, and we had two people from SEH with us, Brad on Skype and Glenn was here, and we are going to start studying the needs around the community, sidewalks and trails and SEH is going to help us set some guidelines for the committee in future discussions. So this was just a lot of brainstorming session mostly to get a handle on sidewalks in the community. And so the study will be called a walkability study.
And Larry had given me some information from Spooner or put me in the right direction to get some information about the potential for some grant funding to assist in doing the study, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kay on Public Works?
Well, it was interesting that she mentioned not only sidewalks but paths because Parks and Recreation Committee has been discussing walking trails for a number of years and we have many, there are interruptions in most of them, so whether that has an effect on their use or not, I'm not sure, but this study would help, help us to learn more about our needs for walking trails.
I think we decided that we need to join our two committees together as one, which makes you very happy, doesn't it, Dave?
Just thrilled. Mayor asked earlier if I wanted to serve on any other committee. Apparently.
Whether you want to or not.
Well, to add, the Park Committee, you'd have to show up.
All right. Moving on, I know the, there was a special goose committee meeting, you want to talk about that, Dave?
Yes. The Goose Committee met on Monday, April 22nd at, we invited anyone interested in the issue to attend and to give us their comments, their criticisms, their insight into approaching the problem. We had a group that did show up, they were very helpful in providing ideas for us, they had some questions that were good and some difficult to answer, and that being primarily about numbers. How many geese are too many? How many are just right? How many are just too few? We were not able to answer that, but I think my position is that this is a five-year program and so during these five years, we're going to be able to develop some numbers and give the community an idea about the size of the problem and the success of the different strategies that we're going to use. I think I mentioned last time that our direction is, has been set for this year and, but only for this year, and then there will be opportunities for everyone to comment and critique and suggest other options. So, nothing radical is going to occur, nothing radical is going to change in one year, but it gives us a start and one of those things will be, it will provide some numbers for us as a baseline that we can work with and use to answer some of those numbers questions that at the present time are not able to be provided. To emphasize, reemphasize the comments that Darcy made about the need for volunteers, yes we do, I want to reemphasize that, that this is a community problem, it's a community project, and we need community involvement. So we would appreciate anyone who would like to participate, whether it's actually painting the eggs, which is our first project this spring, or whether it's identifying nesting sites. All of that information is necessary for us and helpful and we need community participation to do that.
Any questions for Dave? I don't think Parks met this month.
We did not.
Okay. The other committee report is Finance, Rick Davis.
Finance Committee met yesterday, April 30th, and had a small agenda. Griffin Street Lift Station was our first item on the agenda. And we have a special assessment still sitting out in the Whisper Water subdivision that we expect to be reimbursed for. I'm not sure exactly our timetable, but that property is up for sale and there is a possible buyer for that property. Darcy wants to speak to it, can, but he did make contact with the, I think the bank owns that property now.
Bank owns the property, yeah, the Central States Bank owns that property and we'll be, we're developing a letter letting them know about the special assessment.
So if it is so, we do, we do expect to be reimbursed for that special assessment. There was no action other than what Darcy already has undertaken with respect to the bank. We did discuss the new fire truck loan, as you know, the fire truck is, is almost, it'll be completed soon. Our goal when we met back in the fall with our, with respect to the budgets, to keep our, our cost, annual cost on that fire truck as close as we possibly can to what we've budgeted every year in our capital projects fund. And at the moment, we have about $90,000 in the fund and we're going to apply that toward the purchase. The towns are picking up their portion. We will still have a portion of approximately $350,000 or less to fund when the truck is completed, and we're going to finance that with Bremer Bank over 15 years and I'm anticipating an interest rate of about 3.75%. That would allow us to make payments of about $30,660, which is very close to our budget within less than, about $600 of our budget. It does require action from the council later on and our Finance Committee did recommend to the council to approve this resolution when we get to it.
Can I mention something about the fire truck there?
You can.
The one thing about a fire truck, you know, the current truck that we're replacing is, I always say the year wrong, it's about 30 years old, isn't it? 86, 82? Either it's old or new, it depends on when we discuss it, but it's about 30 years old. The fire trucks typically, the larger ones, the more expensive ones like this one, typically have a useful life between 20 and 30 years. All depends on use, depends on a lot of things, but typically, they have a longer span of life. And the objective here was to, with this loan for this truck, is to pay it off before the useful life, maybe half, 30, you know, 30 years, this is 15 is half the life of the truck. And then, then to start to put a little bit of money away in the capital fund, once we pay that one off, to start for a new one. By that time, we will need to put money away for another truck because they will be getting close to their, end of their life. So, so the idea is to try to begin to do that again and to put funds away so that we can pay for a majority of it. These are higher cost items and the idea is to try to keep the cost to purchase them at a, down as much as possible. They don't get any cheaper, so we have to do what we can to, to afford them without undue cost to all those involved in the program, which is the towns and the city of Amory, so.
Question.
Yep.
The last four, four fire trucks have been financed on a 10-year basis. Are you saying that we're going away from that now? Because then that in 10 years puts the middle truck, puts us in a position to purchase another truck and we only have half of the new one or two thirds of it paid for.
With all the capital programs, Rick, we do move things around. If you, our capital improvement plan that we put together, it is flexible. The objective at this time was to try to keep the payments, we were putting $30,000 a year away, is to put the payments at close to that, and that's where the 15-year came in. Doesn't mean that we can't refinance it later and pay it, pay some of it down. We did that with one of the fire trucks we, that had a loan. And yeah, I understand that, you know, I know we have purchased trucks not on this kind of schedule, not using this timeframe.
It's been a long time though.
Yeah, it's been a long time, yeah. And so, you know, if we need to buy a truck, that'll be part of the planning and we'll be prepared to do that. And if we have to adjust the budget to accommodate putting money into a capital fund, then we would probably do that at that time. So, I'm not too worried about getting out of sync there. You know, occasionally, we do have to make adjustments in our You know, occasionally, we do have to make adjustments in our planning.
The only thing that I worry about is that, you know, we have three trucks on a 30-year rotation basis, and so because I was part of the last, the truck that was paid for over a 40-year cycle, we made payments on it for 10 years after the truck was gone.
Why do I do that anyway?
Yeah, I don't want to get in a position where we have 300 or $200,000 left on this truck at the end of 10 years, and now we got to buy the next one, probably $600,000. So it seems to me we want to be really cautious about getting behind the eight ball on paying for these trucks. The other thing that it does, it seems to me, is because I know that we've been, we've been approached by townships as far as our fire protection, and some of the townships being, considering different options other than the Amory Fire Department, is I think we want to be cautious of not having, you know, getting nine years into this, and then all of a sudden, it's all of our, we've burned a third of the useful life, and we still have half of the payments to make on it, so.
I think some of the smaller trucks, Rick, those, those are things that you can actually probably budget for the whole purchase.
Absolutely.
In a year, similar to what we do with, well, Public Works Trucks, similar to that scenario. It is the larger ones, you know, that we.
Absolutely.
Keep out a longer timeframe, so.
Well, this will be the first one in about 30 years that we've kept on a, or 20 years, maybe, that we've made a longer timeframe on it, so, just so we're cognizant of that.
It's a longer timeframe, but it's not that long. It's 15 years, and we're trying to keep our, keep within our budget. We're spending $30,000 a year, and that's what we're going to try to do. We don't want to up it at the, so I think we looked at that, and we know what our needs are with the bigger fire trucks. We don't have anything else that should be popping up within that time period that I know of. We haven't had any unexpected fire trucks recently.
No, I concur with what Rick said about the, we have been putting $30,000 per year into our budget for the last.
Three years.
Three years.
Yep.
And so this will be just a continuation of that. There'll be no need for budget increase, and yet we will be providing an amount sufficient to make our interest, our interest and principal payment.
Anything else, any other comments? Rick?
Only two other items, and I guess Darcy can speak to the TIF six project a little bit, but what it was, we, the city did try to, well, we did apply for a grant that we thought we could use to offset some of our costs over in TIF six, and the grant was not approved, so we are going to have to reduce our costs over in TIF six a little bit, and Darcy will explain how we're going to do that. We're not going to spend anymore, we're going to reduce our costs.
Yeah, part of the two projects that are in downtown, which is TIF six, basically goes from down by Denal Arts all the way down to Broadway, and part of our developer's agreement with both of the, one with the memory care and one with Chet's, there were some things that, using TIF dollars, which is, it is tax dollars that are created from the new development. So the new building being built over here, the expansion and the remodeling of Chet's, those create tax dollars that the city has access to that are from all the taxing entities that come to that district. So the school, the special district, the tech school, the county, the Lake District, all that dollars that are created go into that TIF district, which is number six, and they're available when there is a project to do things, to support that. And part of the project that needs to be done over here for the memory cares specifically is to extend Center Street down to a cul-de-sac, and that includes curb and gutter. There is some sewer work that has to be done there to support the lot that the city just bought last fall, as well as there's some waterline update, upgrades that need to be done in that district. The other part of this project is that over by Chet's, the, and everybody would agree that this needs done, is that the alley behind Chet's is pretty, pretty rough. There is also part of that project is there's some stormwater work that needs done, especially the storm drain, it's kind of in the middle that goes towards the Apple River to the, to the east. That'll have some improvements there. As well as the, as part of the project, because there are TIF dollars available, we're assisting in helping replace the sidewalk on Birch, as well as in front of the store there. And originally, we were trying to apply for dollars that were through the Community Development Block Grant Program through Department Administration. Now, originally, that program was through the Wisconsin Department of Economic Development, and as the, I guess the report I sent out to the council this afternoon, if you read that, you'll see that there are some, wow, there's some big problems with the WEDC, and you can see why that the program was yanked from them and put to Department Administration. Based on some comments we got from the, well, difficult comments that Mike, the mayor and I tried to get answers to why we didn't get the grant, and they varied, we had to go back and look at our project. Bones and I sat down with the engineer and scaled it back significantly in order to use the dollars that are available to meet our obligations. And so we're hoping that we can keep it within our budget, and in the notes here from the meeting, we're estimating it'll be $379,000 that'll be created from increment from a couple projects in the TIF six. And the objective is, is to be able to do the project within that budget, as well as be able to pay for the financing, because that's something that, when we do these projects, we have to pay for them, and there is a TIF dollars that come in every year, they don't all come in at once, and so over a 10-year period, we expect that to be paid for by those TIF dollars. And there are needed improvements in the downtown area for that. Now, there were other projects that we're hoping to do, because we didn't get the grant dollars, we've had to take those out of the project plan. And also, we had a meeting as part of this process, and the mayor was there as well as Bones, to try to coordinate our work with Chet's and the memory care. So in doing that, it will save both of us some dollars in doing the project, so we're not doing things at the, at different times or overlapping. So we've got a pretty good working relationship with both of the projects that are developing in the downtown, and are able to do that, and I think the schedule that was sent out to Bones and I, that was developed by our engineers at SEH, accomplished that and make it feasible to meet their schedules. I think both of them are trying to be open, I think the memory care wants to be open by September, and I think Chet's was sometime end of September, October is when they're completing their work. So exciting things are happening, and some good things in the downtown, and some well-needed development that we're able to support.
Thank you, Darcy. Only one other item that we'd like to, our finance committee is going to recommend, and it's on the agenda, that we leave the local property insurance fund, which would enable us to accept a lower quote for our property insurance. It would save our city about $4,500 a year. Right now, we're using, we're participating in a government insurance fund, and we'd like to, we'd like to be able to participate with, Liberty Mutual, for example, has given us a quote for property insurance, and it's a lot lower. Darcy can talk about it when we get to it on the agenda, but that is an item that our finance committee is recommending that we pursue, and that's it.
Oh, you, Dave going to talk about the last one?
Oh, you mean the.
Goose-nator.
The goose. I thought we had enough of the goose.
I think we have too.
But go ahead, Dave.
Well.
Dave can talk about it.
Let me preface this. The Goose Project has provided a platform for a number of my friends to comment about my role in this project and the direction that it's taking, and how much time I spend on the camera talking about it. So I am a little reluctant to bring up this subject, but on Monday, in the St. Paul Pioneer Press, there was an article about the city of Milwaukee purchasing this.
Madison.
Excuse me, city of Madison, purchasing this amphibian land use device to scare the geese around in various places, city parks, golf courses, large expanses of green. And so we read that with interest, and like we said at our April 22nd meeting, we are open to all different kinds of suggestions, and we will consider them and act on them. So we liked this idea, and it's a harassment device, and so we asked the finance committee, the Parks and Recreation Department, the Goose Committee asked the finance committee if they would approve an investigation and probable purchase of this device. It would be less than $5,000. We have $5,000 in our budget that is almost all still there. And so the finance committee with sober faces said yes, that we could. And so that's what's happening.
And there is an article in the Amory Free Press about that same device, the same AP article, so.
It's a remote control device that's used to scare geese.
Yeah, it'll have lots of conversation, interesting conversations at coffee around town because of that article.
It also has a website, if you're really interested.
Oh, that's a great video.
Just Google or search the Goose-nator, and it pops up.
I'll put a link of it to that site on the Facebook page today or tomorrow, so you can go watch that video. It's quite interesting, and, you know, it seems to work, so it's another creative idea to deal with the geese.
Rick, anything else from finance?
No.
Okay. I think that's all the committee reports, so we're going to go on to new business. And the first item is mine. It's an overview of the organizational meeting, and I guess I'd like to first thank Rick Davis for serving as the council president for the last year. And at the meeting on the 17th, we elected Kay Erickson to be the council president for the coming year, as well as reappointed and appointed new committees for the different functions that the city carries on. And I would like to thank all the members of the community that have volunteered to either serve on the library board, or the planning commissioner, the airport commissioner, all the other committees that we have that conducts the business, and thank those who agreed to be reappointed or appointed. I know a number of them have been serving on various committees for, for many, many years, and I'd like to generally thank all of those folks. During the meeting, we also made the announcement, and we wanted to bring it up here, that Dave Myers, after receiving his mayor's award, has decided not to run for reelection next year, and to give up his seat on the city council after at least 15 years of service. I also announced that I have no plans to run for reelection next year for the mayor or city council, so I will be stepping down as well. And we wanted to use this meeting to make those announcements official, so in case there are people in the community that are interested in serving on the council, or considering running for the mayor's position, that they would have ample time to consider their options. The other thing I wanted to mention, I should have done this under Parks, but I'm going to do it now, is that I've been asked, and I don't know if anybody else on the city council has been approached by members of the VFW Post regarding the request that Parks received at least nine or 10 months ago from the VFW Post, and I think the American Legion together, to designate or to set aside part of North Park for a veterans memorial. When I was approached, the question that was posed to me was, do I support veterans? And I am a veteran. I served in Vietnam War, and I am a lifetime member of the VFW, so of course, I support veterans. And I said, well, what was, what's the question? They said, well, we were told that the city council voted down the recommendation to set up a memorial at North Park, and what I told the gentleman was, no, that was not the case. It was never even brought up to city council. A request was made at the Parks Committee. Parks met with several representatives of the Legion and the Post, asked for more information, wanted to get more information about how much it would cost and how the funding would be. Support, we actually, the committee went out to North Park and scoped out potential site, and subsequent to that, I don't believe our committee received any more information or any more feedback regarding the request. And then Darcy informed me that he heard, I don't know how, if it's a rumor or how accurate, but that the VFW Post has secured some property north of the motel near the dam on 8 for their memorial. And, you know, that's, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't want the veterans or the American Legion members thinking that the reason that the memorial is going to be up there is because the city council was not supportive of our veterans or members of our armed forces. We asked for more information. We didn't get that information, and so we did not take any other action, because there wasn't no action for us to take. And I don't know, Dave, or.
That's correct. I think that's a good, good explanation of it. And it, and it's an example of things that happen at the city level where there are a number of questions or comments made, and some of them are legitimate and some of them are not legitimate, and it's, it's difficult to react to those or respond if they're not presented at a committee meeting.
So I just wanted to take the opportunity, while I had the camera here, to mention that, so that our local vets and members of the American Legion know that it was not something that the city council voted on, there was no action taken at the council, because we had no specific plan that was presented to us with how it would be funded and what specifically was being asked from, from the city. And hopefully, my comments aren't going to upset anybody at the VFW Post or American Legion, but I wanted to set the record straight, at least from my recollection and my perception.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, and I might add that the original proposal generated quite a bit of discussion at the committee level, and it was tabled at least four times, waiting for any further response or requests or comments to be made, and so then finally, two months ago, I think, we said, well, we need not wait any longer, we would just table it permanently. And we did.
I have a little bit of perspective. I was able to meet with one of the individuals who is in the process of going forward with the county project, and I'm a veteran, and I'm also in the VFW as well. It's more, it's a very difficult project to undertake at a local level. The only place locally that it's been done is over in Clear Lake, and that was a very labor and intensive project to put that, the Clear Lake Veterans Memorial together over in the cemetery, and the way it's going to probably take place, it's, it makes more sense that the project is county-wide, maybe, it's probably even be bigger than the county itself, but the location is going to be up by, on the Apple River where the old country dam site is, and that'll, that'll encompass all of the veterans throughout all the communities in Polk County and, and a couple of the adjoining counties as well. And it'll be much more affordable for our local groups that, we don't have a lot of manpower within, within each community, but we do if you put all the communities together. manpower within, within each community, but we do if you put all the communities together. But I don't recall ever being approached at the local level either, so I'm not sure where that came from. But it, it would make more sense that it's a county project as opposed to a community project because of the manpower and, and funds available. Certainly, if we were ever asked, we probably would have provided space for it.
Well, as, as Dave said, it was something that was, I think, at the, because I was at the committee meeting at the time, there was a very active discussion about it and committee members actually went out to North Park and looked at the different sites that we had in mind. And so I think it would have been given serious consideration as long as it wasn't going to cost the city more money than we could afford. But again, my recollection was no specific plan was brought back saying, there was a plan saying, here's what they wanted to do visually, but no plan on how it was going to be funded or what the role of the city was going to be in maintaining it on an ongoing basis. And Rick, you're probably right, something that significant probably is going to require a much broader area for the kind of support that's going to be required, so. Okay, well, we spent a lot of time on that.
Well, let's spend a little bit more time on the last part of your presentation saying that this is my last year in office and, and I want to speak to that because I want to encourage members of the community to consider running for the city council. I have been through, I think, four elections and have never been opposed. And so I, I wonder, well, am I doing such a good job? Or is it just that everybody thinks I'm a dummy for doing it and I deserve it? And I'm sure it's someplace in between. But it's been an exciting time for me. I've learned many, many, many things about city government that I never knew before.
And how to use an iPad.
Technically, yes, yes, including that. And so I've enjoyed every minute of it and so I would like others to experience that same thing and to consider running for that position.
Okay, item B, Resolution 3-2013, which is in your board packets. It's, I believe, our annual compliance maintenance resolution for the DNR. And Bones, you want to mention anything about this?
This is basically promises that we will maintain and clean our sewer systems as we have in all the years past. It's just another step to keep them happy.
So is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Well, we approved the resolution.
Motion by Kay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has passed. We also have Resolution 4-2013, which deals with the financing for the new fire truck. And Darcy, you want to talk about that?
Yep. That nation, pull that out real quick. That is through Bremer Bank and that is for $350,000, probably less than that, but that's what the loan is for. And it is at 3.75% interest. And what Bremer has done is that it's matching the terms that are in the, the state fund for borrowing. So you can go to the state trust fund and borrow or, and Bremer has been very gracious to work with us on this and has matched their interest rate, so, and their terms that they have available. So they've been very good to work with, they're very helpful to the city as our primary, our primary bank. And one of the things we had to do is get this financing in place because the truck's going to arrive. And, I mean, we probably could have wrote a check, but it's not a good idea to write a big check for that amount without having financing in place. So we wanted to get that done and they got it in time so that we could get it approved by the board. So that's part of the, the process for getting these approved.
So it's Resolution 4-2013, it's to borrow $350,000 from Bremer at 3.75% for the new fire truck. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Rick, is there a second?
Second.
David, any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next one, item D, is Resolution 5-2013. This is coming out of the finance committee and Rick Davis talked about it, and this is a motion to leave the local property insurance fund to secure property and casualty insurance through another mechanism.
And that, we've worked with an agent, Bill Saylor. He originally was with Liberty Mutual or Wausau Insurance originally, I guess, and then they were purchased by Liberty Mutual. They, we work with Liberty Mutual with all our liability insurance, general liability coverage, they cover that, they cover our airport and various, I mean, we, municipal insurance is very complicated, so it's not just one carrier. So if you look at our policy, you'll see Travelers Insurance in there and you'll see ACE for our airport. And this is through EMC, who is also the carrier that's going to be working with our, doing our workers' comp coverage. And Bill came to me and said, Dave, can we quote that? Usually, the city has never quoted that because the local property insurance fund, which is a state-run insurance program for municipalities, has been the cheapest. And I will say that in the last couple of years, we have done some bidding and we've never bid out that portion because it was always the cheapest. There has been some increases in that cost for that coverage through the state fund and it's very similar coverage that we're getting through EMC. And several other municipalities, I think New Richmond is going to be doing this as well, have left the fund to save some dollars. And we've seen a few increases in our, our general liability insurance, and so this will help us to save some money as we go forward. And one thing I did like that was in here is that we're covered, and it was mentioned that if the fire hall burned down and every truck was destroyed, it'd all get replaced, 100%, so, you know, we'd be replacing.
But don't let that happen, Daryl. That would be bad on your watch.
Yeah, that would be a lot of, you'd have to explain, you'd have to explain that to CNN and Fox News and everybody else who'd show up, why the fire hall burnt, burnt down. But no, that is a good thing. I mean, we did have an issue when a fire truck did get wrecked in an accident that they did not cover at 100% and so, or, you know, replacement cost. And it, we were able to, to get the truck fixed and back up and running, but it'd be better if those higher-dollar items were covered by 100%. And you never know. And as, as Rick knows, being fire chief for over 30 years, things happen when you're out on the site. So that, having that on there is an important item. So brought this to the attention of finance because this has to go in, as part of the process to withdraw through the fund, you have to have kind of a resolution supporting that.
And the resolution is in your board packets?
But, Darcy, I have a question or a point.
Sure, go ahead.
Of interest. The term "local" is used to describe one of the providers, but that doesn't mean local to Amory.
No, it means the state. It means local government.
Lead homes or.
And we have, we have, I will say that we have put out bids and encouraged the local insurance agents to do our general liability. And one of the difficulties that's been there with that is the Amory Dam. When you have a, a municipality has a dam, carriers shy away from that. And the reason they do is, it's not because the dam itself is in disrepair or anything, it's if it were to break, the damage it would cause downstream and the cost there would be a liability to, to, to the carrier. And, and as most dams are, and as Bones and I found out through that process a couple of years ago, most of the dams in the state of Wisconsin are on some type of list that the DNR has that says they're, what is it, at risk or? And that's because there is a lot of valuable homes and property and the potential for danger to life and limb that are downstream from those dams that can cause harm.
That's me.
Yeah. It would take your goose problem.
In the study that was done 15, 20 years ago about repairing the Amory Dam, the study was done, written, and, and it was discussed about the damage to life and property of me. And so my wife read that in the paper and she almost packed her bags. But I'm still here, my house is still here, geese are still here.
Well, then I need, I need a motion to pass Resolution 5-2013 to leave the local property insurance fund.
I so moved.
David, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. Item E, we have some cigarette licenses. Fran, do you want to talk about those?
I'm sure. We have an application from Act 3 Incorporated, the new owners of Uncle Bob's. When they were here last month for their liquor license, they did not address the cigarette license. And so that's what their application is for tonight, is to sell cigarettes at Uncle Bob's as a new owner. And everything in the application is in order.
Okay. Now with the cigarette, does that require police investigation too?
No, I don't believe it does. It does require, though, that they make certain disclosures about how they sell cigarettes and that they be knowledgeable about the laws that pertain to that.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the cigarette license?
So moved.
Motion by Kay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is for Act 3, Inc., doing business as Uncle Bob's. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The license is granted. We have operators' licenses too, do you want to talk about those?
I'm sure. You have two applications in your packets. Those have went through the police department for background check and have passed that with flying colors and they've met the educational requirements as well. So it would be fine to go ahead and approve those if you so desire.
Okay. And they're both for the holiday, it looks like?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the two operator licenses for the holiday?
So moved.
Chris, is there a second?
Second.
David, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved as well. So now we're going to go into closed session to, so I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19 dot 851C, considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation of any public employee. We're going to be meeting to review the performance of our city administrator. And we will be reconvening to take any action if we need to. So is there a motion to go into closed session? This needs a roll call vote, correct?
Correct. We'll have to go into closed session.
Motion by Kay?
Second.
Second by David?
Myers?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Strobusch?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Van Blakem.
Then we will adjourn and go into closed session.
Bones has computer that I helped him hook up today.
We are going to go back in the open session and we need, we need a motion to that effect, correct?
Correct.
We'll have to go into open session.
Motion by Kay?
Myers?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Strobusch?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And Van Blakem?
Yes.
I did not make clear your name, I'm sorry.
I'm waiting to turn vision of volume back. Thank you.
Okay, we're back in the open session. During the closed session, the council reviewed the performance of our city administrator based on input that I've received over the last few weeks. And as a result of that, we are taking action to renew Darcy's employment agreement and we will be taking, I'll be asking for a motion to do so. For the record, the council's very pleased with Darcy's performance. We think he's been doing an excellent job for the city and we are extremely happy that he wants to stay here in our community.
I would make a motion that we approve and accept Darcy's new five-year contract.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. With that, that's the end of the business, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll adjourn.
Kay, second?
Second.
Chris, we are adjourned.